Good evening. I am calling back to order this meeting of the Sacramento City Unified School District Board of Education. Our student member is absent this evening, so I'm going to ask our board member Christina Pritchett to read the broadcast statement, item 4.1.
This meeting of the Sacramento City School Board is being recorded in its entirety and will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on Comcast, Consolidated Communications, and AT&amp;T U-verse. Today's meeting will air Sunday, August 5th, and Monday, August 6th at 6:00 PM and webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. We welcome members of the audience to address the board. Please complete a speaker form located in the back of the community room and give them to our communications representative along with any handouts that you may have for the board prior to the conclusion of the item's presentation. Please speak into the microphone when addressing the board and state your name for the record. Please limit comments during public comment to the items that are not listed on the agenda. If you do comment on an item that is listed on the agenda, we will ask that you please defer your comments until your item comes up on the agenda. Please also turn off your cell phones or place them in the silent or vibrate mode.
Thank you, Board Member Pritchett. Item 4.2, which is the Pledge of Allegiance, and tonight we're having the student ambassadors from our summer 2018 program lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. If you can please approach the dais. One of you, please feel free to step up to the microphone to lead.
Salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You can stay up at the dais, please. Thank you. Tonight I have the opportunity of recognizing the achievement of our 2018 summer ambassadors. The summer ambassador program was made up of 38 incoming 10th through 12th grade students from high schools throughout the district. The purpose of this program was to equip young leaders with the skills needed to be prepared for the workforce and to make change and become young leaders within their schools and communities. The ambassadors applied and went through a rigorous selection process. After interviewing, were selected to participate in the program. They took part in 10 hours of professional development that prepared them to work at 15 different elementary, middle, and high school sites. And they were critical pieces of our expanded learning summer program. At each school site, their work varied depending on the school's needs, but they did everything from helping with dance class, nutrition, physical activities, and high school preparation. Some ambassadors also took on projects like developing a project plan and executing the restoration of the garden at the Peter Burnett Elementary School. Each ambassador devoted approximately 144, 144 hours of service over the course of their summer to their communities. That's remarkable. Administrators, program managers, and teachers have all commented on the value that you offered to students at our schools and what a critical part you played in our expanded learning summer program's success. We're so impressed with how each and every one of you has matured, grown, and contributed throughout your experience. So let's stand and give you a round of applause. Our 2018 summer youth ambassadors. I have certificates for each of you, so I'm going to come down and we'll hand them out and we'll take a picture with everyone. Why don't we turn this way in case parents want to take photos? William Frisbee.
Mama wants a picture, hold on. I've known her since she was a baby.
Okay. Raquel Ramirez.
Oh, come over here, come over here.
You gotta take a picture with your cousin.
Tiara McQueen. Oh, I'll shake your hand here. And last, but certainly not least, Celine Mesa Zabamtes. Congratulations again to our 2018 summer ambassadors.
I have none, Madam President, but the Superintendent does.
Thank you. I'm pleased to announce that the board by unanimous vote of 6-2-0, with Board Member Hanson absent, approved the appointment of Mr. Matthew Schlegar as Principal Earl Warren I'm also pleased to announce that the board by unanimous vote of 6-2-0, with Board Member Hanson absent, approved the appointment of Cynthia Bolton as Sacramento New Tech High School Principal.
Item 6.0, Agenda Adoption. May I have a motion? Second? All those in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Item 7.0, Public Comment. Before we begin our public comment, I want to remind everyone that we have two minutes each. We have a fairly packed agenda tonight and want to make sure that we honor each of your time and contributions to the evening.
We have three public comments. If you could line up in order, please. First is Peter Clark, followed by Dr. Don Glines and Karen Swett.
Evening.
Hi, good evening. I'm here, I'll be filing a formal complaint with you down the road. I filed a complaint, I was, the person that I dealt with was with Mr. Browning. And basically, his conduct in my complaint is basically an act of suppressed child abuse. My son was verbally, emotionally abused at Sutter Middle School. And basically, the principal and the folks ran a sham investigation. Oh yes, Ms. Valdez, oh yes, she does, it was just, just stuff. My son was very disciplined, he didn't say a thing to her. Had he said something back to her, they may have called the cops on him, something may have happened. In the process of her harassing him, she divested information about his previous abuse, she re-abused him. And basically, I, they were like, ah, we will do something, we will do something, or whatever. Basically, nothing was done. My complaint came down here, August Sims then struck my complaint, telling me about her kids went to Sutter, nonsense, talking, just talking nice, feel-good stuff. I have a very valid complaint and I want it investigated. Mr. Browning didn't do a thing in my complaint. I was gonna do a protest at someone's home, the trustee's home, I said, no, we do it at the school. At the school, the very same teacher that harassed my son is out in front of the school cursing at us, and the principal stands right there and watches. And Mr. Browning makes excuses for her, oh, she was watching traffic, oh, she was doing this, she was doing that. I'll be filing a formal complaint back to whomever, whether it's Mr. Aguilar, whomever, but bottom line is, Mr. Browning did not do his job. He came, feel-good talk, all he knows is Mr. Huramout, and she met her there, whatever. And bottom line is, I feel that if my son was some little, small, skinny, white child, it would have been handled differently. In East Sacramento, I understand that Black and Hispanic kids are handled differently because bottom line is, the East Sacramento folks who are Caucasian, they may bring a little bit more power behind the complaint to the school district. But don't underestimate what can happen. Bottom line is, I will refile my complaint to Mr. Aguilar. I will point out how this man here did not do his job.
We will take your-
And basically, I'm starting over my complaint.
Sir, I'm sorry for your experience. What we're going to do, I want to make sure I put you in contact with Stephen Brown. Stephen Brown is going to be handling our constituent service complaint and helping to resolve our disputes, so we'll put you in contact with him. So it would be helpful to also get the grade of your son and we can move forward with that.
Mr. Browning has all my information, and I'm sure he's pretty aware of me, and he can pass it on to you. He has my phone number and I'll wait to hear from you.
Thank you very much, sir.
I appreciate it.
I'm Dr. Don Glines, requesting to conduct a voluntary workshop for you with the goal of creating year-round space station learning systems. To start, most will want to continue piloting schooling systems airplanes, but we have some eager astronauts. One-size-fits-all schooling does not work, as evidenced in the past by the failed HP mandates. And now we have more current problems, only 3% at SLOPE passed the state test versus at 95% at West Campus, not a learning system. 50% of the current kindergarten kids were labeled below average before they even started out in life. 80% of the current 10th graders were labeled below average, 24 years after no child left behind. The ill-conceived middle schools, there's no such learner as a 7th grader, and I can prove that. Remedial reading is wrong, waiting lists are wrong, the charter of schools dilemma is wrong, mandated algebra is wrong. These are all schooling systems problems. They are not problems in a learning system. I have the experience and the research to create within current budgets voluntary personalized astronaut programs for learners, staff, and parents who volunteer. I've tried personal contact with you, but no response. Thus, I hope this request will entice some of you to meet with me for more than two minutes to discuss why, what, and how these might be accomplished. The legislation which I wrote, signed by Governor Brown, allows us this opportunity. Sheila has copies of my vita, which she will forward to you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We will get those copies from Sheila.
We have two additional speakers, Kenya Martinez and Allegra Taylor.
Hello, good evening, members of the board. I'm coming to you today, not just as a member of the Students with Disabilities Coalition for Students with Disabilities. I'm coming to you as a parent to ask members of the board, our administrators, and our principals, to be accountable. In my recent work with working with the Coalition for Students with Disabilities, I have seen and spoken to parent after parent who has informed me of the different injustices that they have had happen to their students here at Sacramento City Unified School District. Parents have told me about the racial injustices that have happened to them in their schools, at their sites. And so my question to you is, are you going to be accountable? Are you going to hold teachers accountable? Are you going to hold principals accountable? I have written letters to you, Superintendent Aguilar. I haven't gotten a response all the time from you. I have written letters to my principal and I haven't gotten a response from him. So I'm asking you, not just on the behalf of the Coalition, but of, for every parent that sits behind me, every parent who has a child registered at Sac City Unified School District, please be accountable. Our tax dollars pay for you to sit on this board, so do your job and make sure that every student is getting everything that they need. Thank you.
Hello there. So I'm here today and I want to talk a little bit about the history of Sac City Unified School District. I am going to stand in solidarity with the woman that stood before me, because 23 years ago, on the 4th of August, you had a student in your school district that suffered all 12 years, all 12 years. A special ed student that was bullied all 12 years of your, of school in Sac City Unified School District. Sac City Unified School District is the number-one school within the city of Sacramento that is having challenges with African-American students, our Black kids. You know you're at the top of the list for suspensions. You know, the other thing that I don't like is when we bring things to the attention of the district, when we get a phone call from this man over here putting words in our mouth about the complaints that we make. Obviously, Sac City Unified School District didn't learn their lessons with the coach that they hired that was just sentenced for his inaccuracies and the things that he did working in your district. So now we have another situation with coaches, which tells me that obviously you guys didn't learn your lesson. So my question is, what are you guys going to do about the challenges that you're having in the district that are affecting our families and our communities? Stop giving us a bunch of bull, saying what you're going to do, or writing some stuff up and making it look like you're doing something and you're not doing anything about it. You guys have a responsibility, and we are here to hold you accountable to that responsibility. We want equity for Black children, we are tired of our children being bullied, we are tired of them being harassed by the police, and we are tired of them not being educated in your district. This is your responsibility to us, the taxpayers, the ones who pay your paycheck. Every last one of you get a paycheck. That comes from the money that you take out of my taxes, my husband's taxes, the property taxes that we pay. You guys owe our community, and we want to see some changes and we want it now.
Thank you. With that, we're moving on to item 8.0, Board Workshop Strategic Plan and Other Initiatives. Item 8.1, which is approving the renaming of Kit Carson International Academy Theater to the Joshua Wingert Theater. Tonight we have Kathy Allen and Santiago Chapa presenting this item.
Good evening, President Ryan, members of the board, and Superintendent Aguilar. If I could have Principal Chapa, and I believe Michelle Kohler is going to join him at the podium. I was very, very honored to be here tonight to ask your permission for this important renaming. Turn it over to you.
Thank you, Kathy. Good evening, Board President Ryan, Superintendent Aguilar, board members. On behalf of the Kit Carson International Academy, we are here to ask your approval to officially name the KCIA theater as the Joshua Wingert Theater. And this is why we make this request. Joshua Wingert was a student at KCIA for two and a half years. He passed away about five months ago from a long illness. Josh was part of our second high school class and was a junior last year. As you know, we only recently expanded our middle school to a middle high school and just graduated our first class of seniors. I want to thank Jeff and Jessica Wingert for trusting our expanding school with their wonderful son. It took some faith for them to decide that KCIA was the right place for Josh to attend high school, and I'm grateful that they did. I got to see Joshua every day that he was at school. It was the highlight of my day to say hello to him, to talk sports, or to see him eating lunch with a friend. A few of my favorite memories were seeing him on the stage in our school's production of Hamlet, putting himself out there and nailing his role. It was great to see him attend our 9th and 10th grade proms, dressed up in a sharp suit, his data aside and living that quintessential high school experience despite the fact that he was fighting a grave illness that eventually took his life. The international baccalaureate curriculum installs in our students desirable traits called the IB learner profile. One of the traits we teach our students is to be balanced, meaning that students focus on both academic and non-academic activities. Josh was balanced as a high school student, he progressed academically, yet he still made time to hang out with friends, to tell jokes, join clubs, and shoot basketball baskets on the court. Josh was also courageous. He wanted to come to school in spite of how he was feeling, even if he could only make it to a class or two. The last time I saw him sick in bed, he told me he was feeling just fine. The strength that he had to say that still astounds me. And he was caring, he insisted on saying hello to everyone. I can still hear him calling Marty in the office, or acknowledging the teachers and administrators from across the quad. He loved connecting with others, interacting with people, even those that he didn't know. That was Josh. He was someone who understood that life is about bringing joy to others. I'm not sure I can put into words why Josh was so special to the KCIA community. It's not that students and staff felt sorry for him, I think it was quite the opposite. I think we were amazed by him. To have his positive attitude, his zest for life, and his endless optimism, I'm happy that he loved KCIA, and we loved having him here, and we miss him profoundly. The KCIA and ESAC community wants to make sure that Joshua's memory lives on at KCIA forever. He embodied so many of the positive traits that we are trying to instill in our students. I encourage you to approve our request to name our theater after this wonderful IB student. There's no better example than Josh of what we want our students to be, what we want them to strive for. Not a wealthy donor, not a teacher, not a principal, but a young man who loved our school and lived his best life there. During this process, we've collected over 2,500 signatures of students, staff, and community members who support this proposal. We've reached out not only to our school site organizations like the PTSO, our school site council, but also to ESAC Little League, and soccer, Boy Scouts, and the Sacred Heart Church. Josh and his family were involved with all these organizations, and they also know the wonder of his personality and his character. There has not been a single voice of opposition during the process to make Joshua's legacy permanent at KCIA by naming the Joshua Wingert Theater. I urge you to join the community in supporting this vision by approving this request. Michelle Kohler, his drama teacher, would also like to share her thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you, Principal Chapa. That was a beautiful tribute.
Hi, my name's Michelle Kohler, I'm the drama teacher at Kit Carson International Academy. Case?
Don't worry about that, go ahead.
Okay. Three years ago, four, this is my fourth year, I was hired to start a theater program. Being ambitious, I came to Kit Carson High of Hopes and held my first audition. I decided to do Hamlet, no small task. But in came all these students and Joshua Wingert. I knew that Josh was special because he desperately wanted to be part of this show, and he worked very, very hard to become part of our cast. I cast him, he had three different roles and costume changes. I have to say that I was astounded by his dedication and his love for theater and his kindness. Josh affected everybody on campus. He knew everyone's name like Mr. Chapa was talking. He would yell across the quad, hi, good morning, how are you? And always have a smile on his face. When the Black Box was built, I knew, we knew Josh was leaving us. And I knew that I wanted to honor this child who inspired all of us. So when the Black Box was built, I went to Mr. Chapa and I asked him, can we please name the theater the Joshua Wingert Theater? He of course supported that 100% and said, see how, you know, the kids feel about it. I took it to my cast, immediately, they were overwhelmingly supportive of this idea. Not only that, is, they started calling it the J-Wing. So now, we have this beautiful theater, we have this lovely young man who initiated the first production of KCIA. And I think that it would be an honor to not only the students of Kit Carson, but also the community to allow us to name the Black Box the Joshua Wingert Theater. Thank you.
Thank you. That was such a beautiful, beautiful statement. Do we have public comment on this item, Alex?
No comments.
Okay, so with no comment, we'll take questions and comments from board members. Board Member Minnick?
Thank you, President Ryan. I am so happy that this is coming in front of us tonight. I am so happy that this is coming in front of us tonight. It's very fitting for Josh. I remember seeing him in Hamlet. It was pretty awesome. I got to meet him a couple times. My daughter knew him. I think she first met him at the summer program at Phoebe Hurst when they were little and then later at Kit Carson. I know that he had a huge impact on so many people. My daughter JoJo and I went to the, I was going to say memorial, but it was a party, right? At Kit. And I just remember this packed quad of kids and adults and people saying kind of amazing, amazing things about this young man. And you could really see how much he impacted so many lives in a very short amount of time. And I think that everybody that impacted him should be very proud of the impact that he's had on everyone else. I'm very, very excited that we're going to name this theater after him tonight because I think that it's a perfect tribute for Josh. So thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Minnick. Board Member Wu?
This sounds like an amazing man. It sounded like it moved a lot of people. And now I know why a couple of my coworkers are in the room. I think this is your boy. And so I'm going to move the Kit Carson International Academy Theater being renamed to the Joshua Wingert Theater, the J-Wing for short.
Thank you, Board Member Wu. Board Member Cochran?
Thank you very much. I think that this is a fitting tribute for this young man. I'd also like to thank his parents for coming tonight and point out to the board and the rest of people here tonight that they've also created a scholarship in honor of Joshua. And if you'd like any more information about, I'm sure they'd love to talk to you because it's going to be perpetual and it's a very wonderful thing. So I'd like to join Board Member Wu as representative for Kit Carson to move that we do name this theater in honor of young Joshua so that he will always be remembered at Kit Carson.
Wonderful. Board Member Pritchett?
It's very obvious that this young man was loved. There's so much emotion coming from this room. So it's very fitting that we name the theater after him. With that being said, I know there's been two motions on the table. I think there's a lot of support up here, so I will second that motion.
Thank you, Board Member Pritchett. I want to thank the community, the families, and the educators of Kit Carson for sharing Joshua with us, his love and his light, and the commitment to ensure that that lives on. So with that, I think we have a resounding motion and double. And now we will take all those in favor. Aye. The motion carries. We have a new theater named after the wonderful Josh Wingert, and we are going to call it the J-Wing.
Item 8.2, the SAT Update, which will be provided this evening by Vincent Harris and Dr. Iris Taylor. And before we begin the presentation, feel free to leave. You don't need to stay for the academic presentations. We so appreciate your support coming out.
They waited. I love it. Vincent, you have to stay.
Good evening, Board President Ryan, Board Members, and Superintendent Aguilar. My name's Vincent Harris, and our Continuous Improvement Accountability Officer. It's my pleasure tonight to provide a brief overview of the SAT Day results with you this We talk a lot in anchoring our presentations around our core value and the equity access and social justice guiding principle. I think tonight, we really see an opportunity to see how we are actually disrupting elements of the inequities in our system, particularly through the access that we provide students through the SAT Day participation. And in the context of defining equity access and social justice, this is really about instituting a new practice. So we talk a lot about the notion of downdrafting practices. This is really a practice that's meant to ensure opportunities for all students within our system. We'll talk about how we've measured this specific opportunity for all students in Sacramento City Unified. So on an ongoing basis, we've talked about the equity access and social justice theory of change, and one of the anchors of it are the four tenants. Tonight, the SAT Day really speaks to the logistics and operations tenant and how it's applied with great effectiveness by our central office and school sites on behalf of our students. So just an overview of what we'll talk about. Briefly, we'll talk about the SAT itself, but really provide a data profile of our participants and non-participants, and then talk a bit about implications for college-going culture. But before we go into the presentation itself, this is really some of the headlines that I think are really important for us to emphasize. The access for SAT to the SAT for all of our students across all student groups was significant. And so when we compare this time last year or a year ago versus this most recent spring semester, we'll see a significant increase in the number of Sacramento City student juniors who were able to take the SAT. Ultimately, because of SAT scores, we'll see there's about 162 students who actually increased their college eligibility or became eligible for CSU and UC. And then finally, we will actually talk a bit about the scores because ultimately, as we think about student achievement, the SAT is another way to look at overall system performance, and we see that there's opportunities as we look at the SAT scoring results. Briefly, the SAT, of course, is one of the most important tests, if you will, as we think about institutions of higher education in terms of college readiness, and obviously speaks to the notion of students being college-ready. The purpose of SAT Day, and I know you've heard this in a prior presentation, but you know, really big emphasis is for all of our juniors in Sacramento City Unified. The SAT was given at no cost, so in terms of access, this was a free test for our students. And then ultimately, there are resources available through the Khan Academy to support our students. So here's a breakdown of the actual results. And so you can see here, 86% of our 11th grade students enrolled on SAT Day actually took the SAT. This is significant in terms of the access, if you will, in terms of this opportunity. And as I mentioned previously, as we compare that to the prior spring semester, this is where we see a big opportunity gap for our students in which we raised the number of incoming seniors with an SAT score by 59 percentage points. And so that was, of course, significant. Equally important, when we look across all of our student groups, we see significant percentage point gains as well. And so this slide just gives you a sense of all of our student groups showing significant gains in terms of incoming seniors with SAT score. And as we've done in the past, this is a significant breakdown across our Asian subgroups as well. And so again, as we think about the SAT Day in terms of access, it was a significant opportunity for our students throughout Sacramento City Unified, across student groups, across programs, across sites. And this again gives another framework. Again, as we think about our students and making all students visible, it's really important then to look at our students across multiple frames of student data, and so this is our program view as well. And again, as we think about English learners, homeless students, special education, foster youth, we saw gains, if you will, in terms of opportunity. We also spent time thinking about those students who didn't take the test as 11th graders. And so this slide gives you a framework of those students who, and kind of in two ways, right? The notion of students who were at school did not take the test, and then students who simply were not at school that day. And so as you look at this slide, this is an area of further study for us to really try to understand, you know, what were the implications of students who particularly may have shown up to school that day but didn't take the SAT exam as a 11th grader? And so we're doing more internal research as a district. But you see, obviously, as we look at school types, particularly for alternative education sites, we're thinking that points to something that we may need to be more intentional about next school year in terms of making sure we convert students who are at school to take the test as appropriate. And as we look at our student groups, even though we did see significant gains, here you do see a significant variation in the terms of students who were present and took the SAT and then those who were present and didn't take it. So this again has prompted us to start asking internal questions about what does this mean? What are the barriers that existed potentially to mitigate this? And then again, with our Asian subgroup as well, and then our program data as well. So we'll briefly talk about the SAT scores themselves because this also is another important opportunity for us to really evaluate the outcome. So the first part, we talked about the access that our students had to the SAT, but equally important, we know the SAT because it is a meaningful assessment, we wanted to also talk about the outcomes with it. And so this just gives you an overview of the SAT scores, what they mean, and actually we'll talk a little bit more in terms of our local context with the SAT. We've talked a bit about this notion of college eligibility for our students. And so what's important about this slide is that we've done some research based on Sacramento City Unified graduates to get a sense of graduates who've gone to various institutions of higher education, what's been their profile. So you see these profiles of Group A, Group B, Group C, the various universities represented. This gives you a sense of Sacramento City alumni who enrolled at these campuses. This is their academic profile. So you can see here, from a point of emphasis, we're looking specifically at SAT scores. Why that means, what that means for us is that this is an opportunity for us to think about, in a very concrete way, student achievement. Because you can see here, as we look at our district average was 943. You see, that's just below Group C, but you also see that significantly below Groups B and A for the CSU campuses. And so that prompts questions for us in terms of what learnings do we have as we think about student achievement, particularly for our high school students. And then obviously, as we look at it across subgroups of students, there's some variation as well. So that again prompts conversations about what must we learn to create outcomes consistently for high expectations for all of our students. I'll go through these slides quickly because they kind of reemphasize the point of what we were looking at. Another big point for us, though, with the SAT Day was looking at the notion of college-going efforts. And so the CSU system has an index which looks at the combination of multiple data measures in terms of GPA and SAT score. And so ultimately, as we think about outcomes for our students, a big outcome for 162 of our students was this opportunity to really see that just getting an SAT score got them into CSU's eligibility, which we think obviously is significant. And then we have another 431 students who are right at the cusp if we are intentional in sort of our district.
Vincent, I lost what you said. So can you repeat what you were saying about getting the SAT score and their eligibility to the CSU? It ran into the next statement.
Absolutely. So what's really important is thinking about the multiple measures for CSU eligibility. And so part of that is a GPA, part of that is an SAT score. And so as we think about the CSU index, we had students who did not have an SAT score but had the eligible GPA. And so ultimately, it was an important win of SAT Day was that we had the opportunity for those students who had the appropriate GPA but didn't have the SAT score, they got the appropriate SAT score. And so 162 students became eligible via the CSU index.
That would not have been eligible otherwise. Okay, thank you. That's a very important point.
Absolutely. And thank you for stopping me to emphasize because it really is an important point. I mean, it's as, in many respects, is as important as the access that our students received in terms of bottom-line opportunity. And then the 431 is really important as well because it speaks to students who are at the cusp, if you will. Now, if these students have the SAT score, we just need to make sure that they get the appropriate credits, A through G credits. And so ultimately, as a system, this is an opportunity, as the superintendent speaks to changing conditions in the present, these students now become students we can take intentional steps to make sure that they get their full A through G completion. And so you can see here, as we think about subject borderline, which is between 0.25 and two units, as you look at this aggregation, we really have a strong number out of that 431 which are within a unit. And so that really speaks to internal work that we can do to target those students and make sure we have them enrolled principally in credit recovery to make sure that they're in a position to get right back on track. And so that leads us to the next steps and resources. And so being very specific here in using data, for the 170 students that we, you know, are mentally eligible, it's about, you know, using our internal resources to make sure we target outreach to them, make sure that they know that because of their SAT score. And then ultimately, for those other students who are subject borderline, we've already started identifying those students and have a targeted plan to make sure that we close the gaps to those students. Because obviously, if a student's just a semester behind, that speaks to the power of credit recovery. And then for students who are more than a semester behind, we still have an opportunity to take other steps to support them as well. And then finally, the final big next step for us is really deconstructing those students who showed up to school that day but didn't take the SAT, and really just understanding more deeply what are the factors that led to that so we can mitigate them going forward. With that, I'll end.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Do we have any public comments?
No public comments.
Okay, so we're going to take board member comments. I have a few. So obviously, this is my line of work, so I'm very excited when I see that we are increasing the eligibility pool of students in the district, given the guiding principle and the work that's happening towards that end. I am interested, as we talked about, and I don't have slide numbers correlated to the PowerPoint, I don't think they're on there, but as we talk about the number of students who became eligible for the CSU after the SAT, 162 automatically eligible based upon having met that additional criterion, and 431 is being identified within one unit of eligibility, I would like to know the racial background, or so if we have a disaggregated data, so that we can see who we're impacting within those populations. Do you have that readily available?
We can get that, we have it on a slide, in the interest of slides, we didn't break that one out.
So one of the things that we've been talking about at great length is not just increasing our ability to maximize post-secondary options, but really intentionally closing opportunity gaps and seeing a significant increase in our eligible students, particularly our black students, given they are one of our lowest-performing subgroups, and other students of color throughout the district. So I would be very interested in seeing that. I'm also interested how we captured special education students. Were they taking this test?
As expected, accommodations were made for them.
And then I'm also interested in knowing, when you talked about students choosing not to take the test, given that this was offered free of charge and it was done during the regular school day, was that just an opt-out? We don't feel it's necessary, and so we're not going to partake in the test-taking? How did that work?
So that's a question that we're still looking to answer right now because the results came over the summer. We haven't had an opportunity to do the full deconstruction that we'd like to. So my commitment is we're going to do more deconstruction, try and understand exactly the why, because we don't know all the factors that played into it. The first thing you said probably played some role, but we also think there may be other things that we may need to look at in terms of the student experience on the testing day that we want to do some research on before I speak to them declaratively.
So just a couple thoughts around that. Being the daughter of someone who never completed her college education, the idea of taking the SAT was terrifying to me. I thought that if I didn't do well, it was going to measure a failure, a personal failure, and not having the resources to take preparation courses, et cetera, really limited my mindset around how I could tackle that course. So to the extent that we, as we look to continue this SAT for all and expand to the pre-SAT, which I think is phenomenal, particularly given the data, and I think it's a very important data point, that only 4% of students were taking the test going into this expansion this year, I think we also have to figure out a way to communicate the value of the SAT to our students, demystify it, and really ensure that our students recognize this is about maximizing your options. And to the extent that we figure out a way to, in a very simple way, state that in language that is accessible, and even with some peer ambassadors reinstating how important this work is, I think that that would be extremely effective. Do we have any other questions or comments from board members? Okay, thank you. I think we're really excited to see you undertaking this work. I'm looking forward to the disaggregated data and certainly want to see the impact we have for populations traditionally left behind. Thank you.
And we do have that. We'll get that to you ASAP.
Thank you. Item 8.3, African-American Achievement Initiative, also to be presented by Mr. Harris and Dr. Iris Taylor.
So good evening, Board President Ryan, Superintendent Aguilar, and members of the board. My name is Iris Taylor. I'm the chief academic officer, and I'm joined by Vincent Harris, our chief Continuous Improvement and Accountability Officer, and Dr. Tiffany Smith Simmons, who's our human resources director. So we're approaching this initiative on African-American achievement with the understanding that our system is perfectly designed to get the results that it gets. This statement is particularly troubling when you look at the results that we're getting for our African-American students and on a number of indicators which we'll share with you tonight. Our core value calls us out and requires that we work vigilantly to confront and interrupt these inequities, the inequities that we're producing, and to level the playing field so that we can actualize our guiding principle so that all of our students graduate with the greatest number of post-secondary choices from the widest array of options. Mr. Harris shared with you this slide, and it's particularly important in relationship to this presentation because equity access and social justice, there's been a lot of work in the district prior, but what we bring to this particular initiative is a very specific definition of equity access and social justice. Tonight's presentation will center you on that second part of the definition, which is really about equity access and social justice as a check and balance, to ensure that the practices, the policies, the procedures within the system, that we're assessing those for the extent that they are disadvantaging students within the system. So Dr. Tiffany Smith Simmons will share with you some of that historical context that the work around equity access and social justice was done in previous years.
More than 10 years ago, SacCity began exploring a variety of approaches to address the disparities found in the African-American achievement data. Here are a few highlights. We developed model classrooms where teachers engaged in technical, theory, and research-based practices to create culturally responsive classrooms. We offer summer equity institutes for teachers and administrators. A small team created culturally responsive summer schools. These schools included arts and featured instructionally sound and engaging strategies that helped teachers focus on the assets that every child brought to the classroom and not the deficits that often distract from instruction. The momentum was there, and the district was then launched to expand their efforts beyond these few schools. And we engaged in a partnership with Pacific Education Group. PEG helped us to refine our definition of equity and pushed many of us into unfamiliar and uncharted waters as we explored reasons why our system may be responsible for the results that we were seeing. To continue the work, we created a district equity leadership team. We produced discussion starters and the venue of six-minute videos that were sent to school sites to provoke conversations around institutional racism and share strategies that were working in our very own classrooms. We also had a book study for administrators. There were also efforts to make policy changes. A Blue Ribbon Task Force worked to make recommendations which led to the Equity Access Achievement Task Force and their product, a framework for eliminating the achievement gap. The district sponsored a equity fair where over 300 teachers, community members, and principals came to engage in learning. We brought nationally-known scholars to engage our community of learners. Each site developed site leadership teams. Our work continues. Our recent efforts include the Achievement Gap Coalition, which led to our Restorative Justice Collaborative and their recommendations.
So as you're aware, a number of reports have been issued in recent years surrounding the disparity in outcomes for African-American youth. This includes the recent report, The Capital of Suspensions, which highlights the high incidence of suspensions among African-American youth in Sacramento County and SCUSD specifically. Another is the report published by the Education Trust West, Black Minds Matter, which highlights issues as well as promising practices in urban school systems and serving African-American youth. And Sacramento City Unified was featured here as well for its work in its youth development department. Locally, community groups such as Black Parallel School Board and Blacks Making a Difference have issued sets of recommendations on what they believe is needed to impact achievement for African-American students in the district. So Tiffany Smith Simmons will share some of the lessons learned from previous initiatives that we want to take into future work.
As with any initiative, we definitely have some lessons learned. In reflection, despite the best intentions of many folks and without a way to deal with the individual and organizational tensions that were brought because of the implicit bias, we're not where we want to be. We know that with anything, working in silos is not effective. Therefore, without a clear, shared agreement on what equity means and looks like, and the shifts in leadership, we struggle with keeping equity as the main thing and not just something.
So as we move forward, under the current Board's leadership, as well as that of Superintendent Aguilar, new practices are emerging that we believe will help us take the lessons learned that Dr. Smith Simmons spoke about and advance a new strategy to impact African-American achievement. These include the development of a system of holistic review, where the indicators of performance for attendance, for behavior, and academic performance have been developed to create a system for early intervention and supports. These data can be aggregated across race, ethnicity, as well as student program groups. Over the past few months, we've shared with you another shift in establishing criteria for indicators of grade level readiness for K-12, again to assess how students are progressing academically over the course of the school year, as well as during their time within the system. We can then act in ways to keep students progressing, such as through practices like our recent implementation of the Expanded Learning Summer Program, which was an intentional strategy to intervene and increase the number of students who are progressing towards grade level readiness. We've articulated seven priority areas of academic focus for each educational segment, elementary, middle, and high school, where there have been indicators developed to look at grade level, as well as demographic groups, such as according to race, ethnicity, as well as program groups, such as students with disabilities, English learners, and foster youth, for example. We're completely reconceptualizing our site and district planning and development process to ensure that our budgets align to our priorities and areas of need, and that we're able to assess the return on investment within these plans. And finally, we are applying continuous improvement principles to our work, that we are being disciplined in the decisions we make and actions we take in the continuously assessing whether or not our efforts are having the desired impact on student achievement. So for next steps, our next steps therefore, to establish a task force that includes a wide range of representatives, such as those from academic, research, and technical backgrounds and the community members. This task force will be charged with developing a strategy that includes specific outcomes to measure on an ongoing basis. These outcomes would then be reported to the Board of Education and the community to hold the district accountable towards this end. Superintendent Aguilar convened two meetings with African-American community leaders, one in March and another in May, that we think is building will and partnership that can be involved in this task force. The task force would meet between September through December, so a really rapid cycle of work amongst the task force so that recommendations regarding specific measurable outcomes could be presented to the Board by December 20th. And then in February, by February 1st, identifying budget or organizational recommendations and impacts. So Mr. Harris will share with you the warrant for this and the why around the data that's influencing our work.
Thank you, Dr. Taylor. I think it goes without saying that both the Board and community already have seen multiple data points that give pause, concern, and a sense of urgency. And so the goal here is not to suggest that you don't know what I'm about to show you, it's just to give you a framing of the multiple measures that we are going to be looking at as a district in terms of framing our needs assessment going forward. And so as we look at student achievement outcomes, obviously, one of the most important measures is the S-PAC. And we can see here on the slide, as we think about students that are at risk, you can see certainly the African-American average results here on ELA is very low and troubling. And then also, we wanted to acknowledge there are other student groups that we know we have equal, of equal importance that we need to be tackling in terms of our special education students, English learner, and frankly, you could say across the board, many of our students. As we look at the measure of math, the same low result. And so as I present this, this is not to suggest that you don't know already this unfortunate and deeply troubling result, but it's just to reaffirm that our commitment is deep in terms of changing conditions in the present for all students, but particularly our African-American students. We talked about gate in June, we have a horrifically low rate of African-American students eligibility for that. As we think about students for our specialty programs, and certainly we dealt with this as a community during the spring of this past year, and this is just a reminder of why this matters, why this is very important, and why it's mission critical for us to engage and enlist experts to help us address it immediately. Graduation rate, here you see a little bit of a variation in terms of where African-American students stand, but I think we all would agree, graduation isolation certainly is not necessarily the most meaningful measure. And then the other measures I've shown you tonight, both in the SAT presentation and some of the ones right now, get at the fact that we got to make sure graduation means something. And so that's really what this slide is meant to be a call to action for. A through G completion, we know that as we think about the guiding principle, this is fundamental to it. And so there's lots of work to be done for African-American students, Native American students, or homeless students, English learners, special education. This slide was really important at our convenings on the McClatchy conversation, and you can see, as we talked about there, in terms of the eligibility groupings, particularly Group A, we were at zero for African-American students. Again, wholly unacceptable in a district where we know 13% of our enrollment are African-American students. And of course, obviously, as a community, we know that the suspension data is horrifically unacceptable. And so this just gives a framing of it within our system. And you can see where African-American students stand, and frankly, you see where our foster students stand. African-American students are about 35% of our foster students, so we recognize that the profile of our foster students is really something we've got to be looking at too, along frankly with all of our students, because none of us accept the notion of students having behaviors that lead to suspension or expulsion. And chronic absenteeism, as we know fundamentally, students have to show up to school. And so this is another area of deep concern for us. And again, the goal here isn't to suggest that anyone in this room didn't already know these numbers and know the disproportionality, because as Dr. Simmons shared with us, we know the district has been wrestling with this for some significant period of time. And so really, tonight, we're launching the notion of we're going to be intentional and make the data visible as we get better, because we must get better. With that all in there.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Do we have any public comments on this item?
Yes, we have seven public comments. When you hear your name, if you could please line up. Our first comment is from Cecile Nunley, followed by Liz Guian, Carl Pinkston, Lorraine Pryor, Angel Garcia, Tony Tinker, Benita Ayala, and Angie Sutherland.
Am I being heard? I'm not sure. Good evening, Board members. It's nice to see all of you here. Obviously, this is one of those that I wanted to come back and I think needs to stay in front of the Board because the data is just so troubling, and it's imperative if no one else, it's like just keep hammering and just saying this, because it has to be in front of the Board. Some of the things that I did notice when I was looking at this, as far as the lessons learned, I think they're very revealing as far as a shared agreement and definition. Obviously, there's problems there, and those need to be addressed. I'm hopeful that they will be addressed. But I also noticed on, I believe it's where do we go from here? All right. Now I can't find it. Maybe it's not.
Next steps?
Next steps, probably. And also, I was looking at the, and that may be where it is, looking in the agenda item, and one of the things that I noticed on it, on page two, where it talked about the budget, and it says, "The budget for this item is still to be determined and will take into consideration the district's current fiscal condition. Funding from BRATs and other external sources will be investigated and pursued." So right now, there is no budget for this item, is I take it what we're saying. There's nothing for this, so that's a little troubling. I thought it was on one of the slides where it talked about the discipline, we needed a disciplined approach and some other things, and I thought that was interesting because there was nothing on looking at discipline for the kids, you know, as far as the changing that system of discipline where it's going against the kids. The other thing that I did notice, and I'm sorry, I'll finish really quick because I know my time is up, is the last slide on the data where it talked about chronic absenteeism. Have we also looked into that soft suspension item where people are being encouraged, students are being encouraged, "Don't come, that way it's not on your record that there's a suspension." So it looks like, oh, they're chronically, it's their fault they're not showing up, when actually they're being pushed out is what's really going on. And that, I think, needs to be looked at, and it's hard to track that data, but we know that it does happen. So that's something.
They're all excellent points. Thank you very much. Ms. Guian.
Good evening, Board members, President Ryan. Liz Guian with Public Advocates. I want to thank the district for being responsive to the coalition requests from June to establish an initiative much like the graduation task force, and this sounds like that is what is being planned. I appreciate very much and really commend the district for the candor in the language that's being used to talk about your commitment to, quote, "disrupting the predictability and persistence of these terrible outcomes." I think that the coalition and others of us would be very interested in learning more about how we can work together with the work teams that are described here, especially around school climate, suspensions, and absenteeism. And I also recommend that the SRO contract be one of those items for public discussion so that all of us can understand really where we are allocating our resources for school resource officers and police. In terms of the metrics or the initiatives that were highlighted in the presentation about some of the emerging practices coming from this Board, I wanted to commend the Board for those things. I think they're very good. But I do want to make sure that the school climate issue doesn't go away, and also wanted to highlight that in this year's state budget, we were successful in getting $13 million, and we hope that this district will be one of those districts that takes advantage of those resources that we hope will come out of that.
Thank you very much. And Ms. Guian, I've already been in conversation with the Governor's Office about those monies. Thank you.
Good evening, Board members and Superintendent. My name is Carl Pinkston, I'm with the Black Parallel School Board. First of all, I want to acknowledge the work that the staff did bring forth, a long overdue African-American achievement initiative. I particularly want to acknowledge Tiffany Simmons, who, this is the first time I've actually seen and presented a historical analysis of the work that has been done in this district, because it all too often gives the perception that nothing has not been done. A lot of initiatives have come through, particularly task forces, another meeting, another... A lot of initiatives have come through, particularly task forces, another meeting, another, particularly a lot of task force. I don't know how many task force initiative hiring people we've had over the years. And again, the numbers remain the same. In my office, where I sit, I have a 2008 data of where we stood, and looking at the data today, it doesn't look that much different. So, I think in terms of getting more data, I'm a little concerned. So, I have three recommendations that we should consider going forward. One, don't establish another task force, but establish a standing Board Committee. This is something that Ellen Cochran has suggested for this, for the Board. I think you need that for oversight of implementation. That's what's missing, the oversight for implementation, not more info. I think we have lots of data. Second, fully implement our Board Policy 5137 and 5144 by first establishing a district committee which includes community organizations, teachers' union, and district staff. We need to get started, and we've never have gotten started to fully implement. We've done a lot of Mickey Mouse stuff, but we haven't done the kind of really difficult process along the district to make this happen. And then, lastly, I know you want to go outside to go find something, but one other thing that Tiffany Simmons demonstrated in the report, we've had a lot of outsiders. We've had a lot of people come in and tell us what to do. I think enough. You've got resources, assets, both in the community and right here in the district, and right now, you just need to pursue forward. So, utilize what you have, do not search, do not go to New York, do not go to New Orleans, do not go even to Paris. Go right here to Sacramento, and you have the assets. And if you don't, you're going to have real challenges again.
Thank you, Mr. Pinkston.
Good evening, Board President Ryan, Board members, and Superintendent Aguilar. I wish Ms. Darlene was here. I know she's watching, because she would be so.
I'm getting texts from her, don't worry. She's making her voice heard.
She would be so happy. I just want to say, thank you guys for putting this on the agenda. This was long overdue, and I echo a lot of what Mr. Pinkston mentioned. I do want to highlight Black students with disabilities. I don't want them to get lost. I know that they were mentioned, you know, a few times in here, but when we talk about key indicators, and I know it said, including but not limited to, but we really, really want to ensure that we're measuring the disparity for Black students with disabilities, particularly those identified with emotional disturbance, those placed in segregated settings, and those Black students with disabilities disciplined at a much higher rate. We know that all increases the school-to-prison pipeline, and a high percentage of Black youth who go to jail and prison have learning disabilities. Black students with disabilities lose about 77 more days of instructional time due to suspensions compared to their white peers with disabilities, according to a report from Charles Hamilton Houston Justice Institute at Harvard Law School and UCLA Center for Civil Rights Entities. So, we need to keep that in mind, and committing to implementing evidence-based practices for learning disabilities and other disabilities, because this will help decrease behavioral issues in class. We know that students are being sent out, and it's, they're losing time, they're never getting remediated, and they're losing the chance to be successful. The other thing I wanted to highlight was, we want to ensure that the community groups that are being collaborated with include those that serve Black students with disabilities. Ones I could think of are NAMI, Us Coalition for Students with Disabilities. Make sure that you're including the community, you're including parents of Black students with disabilities. Don't forget to include the families and the expert, who are the experts, and organizations that serve these families. I'm sorry, I'm going to mention a couple more things. Ensure ongoing training for districts, and it's mentioned here, our implicit bias training, and a commitment to trauma-informed practices. It's crucial. We talked about this at Graduation Task Force. Again, like Mr. Pinkston said, we want to see implementation. We want to prepare these students to be leaders and self-advocates. It's the district's job to ensure that these students are college, career, and life ready, because we know too many Black students with disabilities leave our district, and they're left to figure it out on their own, and we know the outcomes. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Angel. Tony.
Good evening, Board members and Superintendent. I just wanted to make a few points. So, I've been on this process of African-American achievement and closing the achievement gap since 2007. I was part of the College and Access to Success. I was part of the committee that made the 200-page report with Lessons Learned, which you probably took from, okay? I have been a parent in this district. I have two African-American children that have disabilities, that have autism. I've been a student in this district. The point that I have to make to you is that we've tried SLCs, Small Learning Communities. We've looked at all of these things, and we keep talking in the same circles, and I'm concerned. I'm highly concerned, because the community keeps coming back with the same lessons learned, and it's upsetting, because the lessons learned are exactly the lessons learned in 2007, in 2009, and 2011. And I have been a part of each of those task forces, both as an academic and as a parent. If we do not start listening to this community and the things that they are telling you from their expertise as parents, as being Black parents, Black students, community, you will never move forward, ever. You will continue to spend money in circles, round and round, and nothing will get better. We have to see ourselves reflected in this achievement. We don't see ourselves, my son asked me when he was young, "I don't see a Black male that looks like the Black men I know, being taught in the classroom, being in front of me, 'Mommy, can you fix that?'" He is almost 21-years-old, and I have not fixed that. So, I implore you to listen to them and start to bring forward this expertise that does not have letters in front and in back of their name.
Thank you, Tony.
Good evening. Lorene Pryor with Black Youth Leadership Project. I just want to thank the Black Parallel School Board and Ms. Toni Tinker for the work they have done. What I heard, I'm not really sure what your achievement initiative is. I'm still trying to figure that out. I heard all the data, I heard the lessons learned, but what is the plan to address the achievement disparities in your district? How can we address achievement disparities if we're not going to first address the suspension and expulsion rates in this district? If we can't keep them in the class, how are we thinking that they're going to learn to achieve anything moving forward? It's crazy. I'm looking and I'm watching the frustration of people who've been involved in this work now, it sounds like 11 years, and I've heard recommendations. Implementation is time. Now, it's time for implementation. How many recommendations does the Board need before they move forward? The last meeting we were here, it was said that we can't mandate training, because that goes through the unions. Well, why aren't they here, and why aren't they talking about how they're going to help keep these kids in class that their teachers are supposed to be teaching? We can't give anybody a pass at this point. Everybody has to dig in and do what they're supposed to do, or we need to not have negotiations with people who refuse to act. It's time to cut the crap. We've got to figure out what's best for our students, and we've got to move forward with that. And we, Black Youth Leadership Project, The Village, we're ready to step in and be part of the discussion, as long as there's going to be implementation once we have that. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, I know everything takes money, and this district was given, I think, $12.5 million a few years ago to help with the absenteeism with Black children. Where'd that money go? What did y'all do with that money? How did it change the attendance of Black students? What do you do with the money that is supposed to be allocated specifically for the improvement and the advancement of our children? Why is it that this district can't seem to get it together? You've got the Black Parallel School Board, who has done a wonderful job trying to bring solutions, but you guys are not listening to the solutions. You're not implementing the solutions. So, I tell you what we're going to do. You either can implement, start doing some implementations, or we're going to implement a few things in the community, because Black communities are tired of being left behind on every front. I just spoke to the city council meeting about the same thing. This is about equity. This is about, do you really give a damn about Black children's and the success of Black children? Because if you did, you wouldn't take 11 years to implement something. This is ridiculous. Either Sac City Unified School District makes some necessary changes with Black communities, Black children, Black families, and we want you to put the money up. We're asking for an audit. I want to know what happened to that money that y'all had, that you were supposed to be using for Black children who are being late coming to school. I want to know, why isn't there any changes? And my son is 23-years-old. There's no changes. There's nothing. You guys keep giving us all this lip service, all this research, and all these meetings, they're not amounting to anything. We want results. If Sac City Unified School District does not start presenting and implementing results that complement our community and help our children, we are prepared to take some next steps, too.
Thank you.
Those next steps look like this. It's called boycott, Sac City schools. That's what it looks like. Now, there's a lot of people in the community that want to do it now. We're giving you an opportunity. Open up your campuses. I'm cleared. We're ready to come on campus, first day of school. Orientation, tell me what your worst school is. We'll be there.
Thank you. It's been a while.
Board members, I stand here with a heavy heart, because I am actually a student who graduated from Sac City Unified in 1984. When I graduated, I was illiterate, and I went off to college, and I was diagnosed with a disability. So, we're talking about, if I'm 52, these are years that go back over 30-plus years that we've had this issue. I have two boys, one that went through the HIS program, who I find that in this school district, when you're highly intelligent, you get a lot of perks, you get teachers that are into you, you get teachers that are uplifting you and guiding you. I have another son who gets special needs services, and let me clarify, services, because he's a Sac City student before he's a special ed student. So, I say that because you're failing him. Special Ed's not failing him, Sac City's failing him, but because of the fact that he doesn't have the things that are equipped for you to teach him, okay? He was also the one that could have been suspended, but yet, because he had a mother like me, he was not. Why? Because he was put in a predicament that employee put him in, that they felt the need that he no longer needed to be on the campus. That's unacceptable to me, and that, to me, requires, it says, that your staff in certain areas are ignorant. And I don't mean that in a negative way, because I was ignorant to autism when he came into my life. So, what I would suggest is that, to him, if he was not on a certificate track and he was on a diploma track, that would require your teachers to figure out how to teach him, because that's part of their responsibility and part of their job, right? I also would say that there needs to be some accountability at these principals. They can just feel that they can yank a child at any point, because of the fact that they feel the need and they're their threat. But if they don't have the knowledge to understand that something that they're doing is wrong, how do you kick them out of school? I don't understand that. That's where my frustration would come. So, what I would say to you is, is look at those things as far as with the special ed, and look at those things where far, when someone's highly intelligent, how you've educated and touched those children. Why can't it trickle all down to regular ed and to the special ed? Thank you for listening to me tonight.
Thank you for sharing your story.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Angie Sutherland, and I wanted to talk about the demographics, the way our district presents demographic information for students. It's only separated by labels. So, you have ethnicities listed out, and then you have disabilities lumped into one, EL into one, homeless into one, foster. Can you please show the data of African-American students? Where are they at? Where is their placement? Tell us what they're doing. What schools and programs are they in? What is their, are they, which ones are students with disabilities? And which school sites are they at? How are they? We need to see more than just African-American students are this, because they're not. There are many other factors that we need to be looking at, and the community needs to know, and schools need to be accountable for what's happening. We need to know all of that other information that is shown, the dropout, the graduation, the discipline, the achievement. We need to see that more than just in the different pots that you, labels that you put them in. And I'm wondering why the discipline policies are not being revised yet, and when that is going to happen. So, I would like an answer.
Thank you, Angie. Actually, I do. Do you have anything else you want to share?
No.
Okay. So, do we have any other public comment?
No other public comments.
Thank you, Ms. Sutherland. So, on the school discipline policies, my vain chairs are Policy Committee, and we're actually having a meeting on August 10th, in which we're going to be going through a series of our school discipline policies to see where they currently stand, where they're inadequate, and where we might need to strengthen them in terms of implementation. I have a series of things that we're tackling right now, Ms. Sutherland, but I will say, the school discipline piece for me is key. I mean, you've heard me talk about this in the past, it's impacted my own son. And I was pretty shocked when I attended about a month ago, a presentation by Dr. Luke Wood, who put together the Capital of Suspensions Report, and detailed Sacramento City Unified School District's performance. And one of the things that he shared, in addition to the data points that we've all talked about in terms of the disproportionate suspension of our Black males, was an astonishing piece of research that he's done around what that means in terms of a child's sense of belonging and welcomeness at a school site, and how that psychologically affects them mental health, a student achievement, willingness to even to go to school, so we're talking about chronic absenteeism. And for me, it was really profound, because we saw a lot of data around what the discipline looked like. But what we weren't talking about was kind of the lifetime effects, and how literally in preschool, by disproportionately disciplining our Black students, we were essentially telling a whole classroom of students who were white, Asian, Latinx peers, that Black students were bad. And he talked about the psychological effects of a child who was being conditioned to believe that they were bad, and then children also picking up on the fact that that child who was being disciplined was a child that they didn't want to be surrounded by, and how that then affected how children showed up to kindergarten, in first grade and second grade. And I certainly have seen that with my own son, and it was heartbreaking. I mean, quite candidly, I cried during the presentation, because to have it put in those terms, to see what it meant in terms of self-confidence and ability to even want to go to school was shocking. Over the last month, and I'll only speak for myself, two months really at this point, I've spent countless hours with folks from the County Office of Education. In addition to the Cecil presentation that I went to, I've met several times with the Governor's Office and policymakers, with community groups, because what I've heard has been a series of things. One, that strategies that have been tried have failed, not just in Sac City, but in other areas of the state pertaining to trying to lift student achievement. And then, the other thing that I've heard pretty consistently is, we don't have the resources to be able to dedicate to lifting student achievement. In fact, we're in a fiscal crisis. Well, I do understand that we are in a very difficult fiscal place, but my response is, we can't afford not to serve our Black youth. And when I'm seeing this crisis right now affect my own child, I have another child who was just assessed as needing special education services, there is an urgency that is felt in a very visceral way. I'm happy with the movement that we're starting to see. It's insufficient, but we're starting to see it. I think that my request is going to be to the Superintendent and the Board that we have a detailed plan for the African-American Achievement Initiative at an upcoming Board meeting, I think likely in September or the following month. I don't, however, want to be creating a detailed plan based on what we all believe is going to, in fact, move student achievement, reduce disproportionate suspension and expulsion. So, I think I've heard you, that you want a plan, but frankly, I think that's a hollow plan if we don't actually convene key groups to get input, local groups, I hear you loud and clear, to develop that plan over the course of the next month to two months and beyond, because frankly, we can bring something to you, but is that really going to meet the needs of our students in crisis? I think we have to be doing it in partnership. Do we have other comments or questions from Board members? Board Member Cochran, followed by Board Member Wu.
I'd like to thank Member Ryan for her comments. I wholeheartedly agree with them. And the team here, the work that you've done, I very much appreciate it.
And the team here, the work that you've done, I very much appreciate it. So, I'm a pretty linear thinker, and I know that I personally could not achieve the goals that you're working towards. I log the effort that you're going to do. This is what I would ask of you. When you have a project that is this important and that involves a history of not working and many, many tasks that are set ahead of you that are going to change societal outcomes in the past, that you, like we've mentioned, like Member Ryan has mentioned, that when you gather information and you get input from the community and you have a plan, you also have a monitoring system that is basically a checklist. Because everything that you do is not going to work, but you have to make sure that as you conceptualized it, that it actually gets tried and gets tried thoroughly and is supported with the money that we need. But gathering information and having a plan has to be followed through and has to actually be tried in a checklist-type fashion to see if what you come up with really does work. And I know that in everyone's heart, when they do this type of work, of course, that's the plan, but so much gets in the way. Funding, different ideas, transitions, new staff, all these types of things. And I'd like to see this be a solid effort from start to finish. Let us know what the board members can do. All of us are willing. I know money is going to be a big factor, and I think we have to start having that discussion. Thank you again. And if anything I can do as board member in Area 2, please let me know.
Board Member Wu, followed by Board Member Minnick.
I want to concur with my other two colleagues, of course, and I wholeheartedly agree. We've been in this exercise for over 10 years. As you embark on this proposal, do you have that you can take with you lessons from the past? Because if it appears to the public that we are just repeating the exercises that we've been going through for the last 10 years, we're bound to get the same result. And I've been interested to hear at the next presentation, what we are doing differently or what lessons we have learned from the past that did not work so that we don't fall into the trap of repeating those. We here on the dais today weren't here 10 years ago, weren't here 11 years ago. So, we don't know what didn't work, but we do know, as the public has informed us, that the results have not changed. And so, in order to move that needle in an upward position, I want to be assured that we don't do what we did before. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Wu. Vice President Minnick.
Thank you, President Ryan. First, I just want to thank you all for the amount of work this took, and I really appreciate the process that you're going through. I really appreciate the use of this task force to identify where we're, you know, what we need to implement right away. There is a lot of talk about, you know, we need more meetings, we need to implement things. It's absolutely true. But we need to have the right people in the room to decide exactly what we need to do to make this happen. This task force is not going to be about figuring out what the problem is because we all know what the problem is. We're going to have the right people in the room to make the recommendations that we can move on right away. As someone who is part of the graduation task force, this was not like previous committees or task force in this district. This was some fast-moving stuff. And, you know, we presented recommendations in December that were implemented in the spring and then in the summer, including the summer program. And so, I, you know, commend the superintendent for acting on those recommendations right away, and I think we can see that same thing happen again. I also appreciate the short timeline because it does create a sense of urgency that if we have a lot of time, we tend to use up all our time. And I think that, you know, as, you know, from my experience in the graduation task force, when we extended into the spring, there was a lot of drop-off in members, and we need the right people there for the shortest amount of time possible to figure this out and start moving. So, I really appreciate that. I think that this is the way to go, and I think we have, you know, just several months to really identify and then start moving forward. The only other thing that I'd like maybe the superintendent to address, because I believe that Ms. Nunley brought up the budget question, you know, how are we funding this? And I know absolutely we want to look at all other revenue sources to support this work, and there's a lot of foundations out there that, you know, that would like to support this kind of work. But I do also know that we did in our budget identify funds specifically for the African-American Initiative, and I, maybe you can clarify that. Thanks.
Sure, Member Minnick. Just for the public's knowledge, when we adopted the budget for 1819, the board did, as part of the budget adoption, include $350,000 to continue supporting the graduation task force recommendation implementation phase, as well as work to serve our lowest-performing students in the district. And that was knowing at the time and still uncertain at this point, that the state is looking at providing additional supports for school districts to support what they're terming lowest-performing student groups in every district. And we have heard that Sac City has about 1,000 or so students, about 900 students, and that we would receive about 1.7, 1.8 in additional resources to continue serving our lowest-performing students. And certainly, we will leverage all of those resources, as well as continuing to look elsewhere to foundations and other agencies and entities to leverage resources as well.
So, that's just to clarify, the one-time budget funding is $1.8 million that we would be receiving for this group. Board Member Hanson.
Thank you. I've got a few comments and questions. One, just a brief thing. I know we all know some of the, kind of the jargon stuff, but I sympathize a little bit with our speakers when, you know, we're looking to have more information that we can provide folks and be able to do a little bit more granular. When we have like S-Back, ELA, I mean, we know what those things are mostly, but I think it'd be valuable just to spell those out just for the folks who are following, who want to be able to understand that better. One of the questions, how is gate determined? Gate admission? So, you know, looking at that slide with the proportion of gate students by ethnicity for grades 2 to 6, is gate something done district-wide or by at-school?
Yes, gate's done district-wide, and so, we screen in first and third grade with the NAGLIERI and the COGAT, which are cognitive abilities assessments. And then, we also use local assessments for academic achievement. So, it's those two factors.
A local assessment, is that done, what's a local? I mean, so the other ones are district-wide assessments. What's a local assessment?
Yeah, so a local, well, a district-wide assessment is a local assessment.
I was struck by, obviously, you know, having such a low amount for our black and African-American students, but also such a high percentage for our white students. And I look at our Asian students at 17%, where our white students are 29%. Yet, I look at all the other academic measures, and some of the highest, usually the most highest performing are Asian students. So, I wonder why are white students such a greater, you know, number? So, maybe there are some systemic, you know, issues that are, that just kind of pop out because of that. I'm looking to at, you know, I know we had a discussion at our last board meeting, and it was a while ago, but talking about suspensions and expulsions. On the task force, I assume we're going to invite members of the teachers' union leadership to be part of that task force. That would be the, that would be part of it. Because none of this is going to happen unless the teachers' leadership is going to be part of making this change happen. And, you know, the district's responsible for accountability and making sure that we put systems in place that are part of the program. But unless we have the teachers' union buy-in as we move along, we will continue to have this problem year after year after year, and our community members are rightfully, will continue to be more and more discouraged by our lack of results. And I'm sad that the teachers' union leadership's not here at this meeting today. They should be here to hear this. We talked, you know, Tony talked about having black teachers. You know, we need to have those, representation of all of our students in our district, and that's a partnership that we need to have with our teacher union leadership. And everything can't be, everything can't be a negotiation point that we only talk about when we do negotiations every two years. And it always ends up being just about money, and these things frankly always drop off the table. So, we also need our community to help us hold people's feet to the fire, ours and our employee partners, so don't forget them. Expulsions and suspensions, 90% of the time are done by the teachers. They're not done by us. They're not done by the principal. They're not done by administrators. So, unless they're part of the discussion, and they're not going to be part of the solution, and we're not going to solve anything. I like the idea that Member Cochran mentioned at a previous meeting of having a board oversight committee. I think that that's important for us to assure, ensure accountability. I'd encourage our executive team and the superintendent to seriously consider that. It is a problem with government. People change, board members change, staff changes. That's just the way it is. But unless we have a continuous group of people that are always charged with looking at that and holding people, each other accountable, having the community hold us accountable and us holding the community accountable to help us be partners, you just can't come up and ask us to do something without helping us get stuff done. But we all have to be partnered together on that, and I think unless there's a board oversight committee that's empowered to, you know, keep track of this, and if we've got solutions and part of it, for instance, was hiring more black teachers, you know, what was our metric of what did we do one year to the next? How did we make sure that when, you know, it's time to make changes in that, that we've actually done something and we're keeping the ball moving? But otherwise, we're, you do get caught in this continuous loop of whoever the new people are, come in and, you know, rightfully decry the situation, and we come up with new ideas, and two or three years later, half of us are gone or a quarter of us are gone, and we haven't changed anything except for the folks in the audience who see we haven't done something, and we've gotten three or four more cohorts of students have moved through our schools that we haven't served the way that we should be. So, this really strikes a chord. Teachers' union leadership has to be part of this. I want to hear them commit to being part of this. I want us to all be working together on this, and I appreciate you bringing it forward, and I appreciate the comments of the folks who step forward to the mic to give us your viewpoints. I mean, it's a continuous partnership is the only way this is going to change. I mean, this is, it's not just our school district. So, if we can move the needle here, it makes an impact beyond just for our own students because we can teach something to everybody in the rest of the state and nation. So, I look forward to getting the project going. So, thank you for your work on this thus far.
Thank you, Board Member Hanson. Board Member Cochran, did you press your button again? Okay.
So, I'll just make this brief. So, the staff here knows, but I don't know if everybody in the audience knows, but I'm a 20-year veteran teacher, and I personally have spent time doing self-critique and self-analyses about how I have worked in the classroom and actions I've taken. And I know that I have not always done things that have been the best for my students. And if you have a teacher who's worth her salt or his salt, that will always happen. The teachers in this district are willing to do that. When you look at teachers as a whole, you're always going to have some that shouldn't be in the profession, but you have the majority that are wonderful people and who are willing to do this. I can't let something that's incorrect be said, and I think that most of us on the school board understand this. When a teacher's in the classroom and they fill out a discipline report, they're not suspending the child. What they're doing is they're sending it to the administration, the vice principals or the principals, and they're the ones who actually decide what the discipline's going to be for the child as far as expulsions or suspensions. Furthermore, expulsions aren't made on the school level. They go to the school board, and school board members do vote on expulsion, so we're directly responsible for that. If you want to know processes and you want to know the correct processes, check with our staff here, and they will tell you. There's a lot wrong with this system. I myself have seen a lot of things, and I myself have done things in the classroom that I shouldn't have done, and in retrospect and self-examination, I've checked and corrected myself. Ask teachers to do that. I think that you'll get a good response, and you will be pleased with what you hear.
Thank you, Board Member Cochran. Just a couple of quick closing comments. I think that one of the things I consistently hear from teachers in my area at my school sites is that there is a desperate need for training in trauma-informed practices, that much of the time when we see students leaving the classroom because it is difficult to manage the student, it's because there's a lack of training and cultural sensitivity that I know so many of the students are impacted by gravely. So, I think that trauma-informed practice training is key. In my own area, we're figuring out ways to sponsor free trauma-informed practice training and offer it on a voluntary basis to several of my schools. So, for instance, we have a training coming up at the end of August, and I have teachers coming from Bret Hart, from Oak Ridge, and from Father Keith B. Kenny, giving their time during the summer to build their toolkit so they can be more culturally competent. How do we scale that for the benefit of all teachers across every school site in the district? These are the questions we should be asking. I want to say, just in closing, that it is astonishing to me when we look at the lifetime correlation between education and the ability to be economically self-sufficient and achieve, and we see that only one African-American student is eligible for the elite CSU colleges. Zero African-American students are currently eligible for our most elite University of California colleges. That should keep us up at night. And frankly, I would tell you that if we saw these data points for our white community, this room would be filled. So, when we talk about needing the community to hold us accountable, we also need you to work in partnership. I called for at the last board meeting, an immediate end to the practice of willful defiance beyond third grade. We should be working in partnership to say it's not about getting our house in order and figuring out when we're all comfortable having that end to willful defiance policy. It's not about waiting for the state to pass statute to end willful defiance beyond third grade. We are going to do it because it's the right thing to do for students in crisis now. So, we need you as community partners to stand with us to make that happen. So, thank you so much for the staff. We appreciate your efforts, and we look forward to coming back with a more fully-formed plan. Item 9.0, the consent agenda, do we have a motion? We have two public comments on this item. Are they combined or are they individuals?
Two individuals, Angie Sutherland and Angel Garcia.
And it's specifically on item?
9.1G.
9.1G.
It'll just be me, so quicker. So, on behalf of the Coalition for Students with Disabilities, we would like to thank Dr. Taylor for taking the time to speak to us about this item 9.1G, the curriculum materials, the supplemental curriculum for special day classes. So, we understand that it's just a set of companion materials that are going with the new ELA core curriculum. And we don't have concerns so much about the curriculum, but more about the implementation. So, first, I want to share the three concerns. First is accountability of the new curriculum. Second is the alignment with the Fair Education Act. And third is the procedures for approval of new curriculum. This was just put on the consent agenda, and it would never, we never saw it presented to you as a board, so I don't know if you know what you're, quite what you're approving.
to you as a board, so I don't know if you know what you're, quite what you're approving. So the student accountability data has demonstrated that the current system is not working and is unlikely to work as teachers adjust to a new curriculum. As the students learn, informal assessments need to be done. We learned that there is no set assessments that are going to be done. They have to be negotiated through collective bargaining. And without regular assessments, how can you know how a student is progressing? Students are falling through the cracks, and we're finding out later when they've fallen way too behind, and they're not getting the help they need. We learned that the Eldorado County Selpa presented ideas for accountability at the Advisory Commission on Special Education, and they're doing periodic assessments, and through that, they're providing appropriate supports. They've developed a culture with their staff reminiscent of a growth mindset in which teachers, districts, and site administrators are reaching out for ongoing support. And it's a practice that should be implemented in our district. Just one big concern is we learned that the teachers in the special day classes do not have to use a curriculum. And we've confirmed this being parents when we've visited classes and we've asked the teachers, because we're considering our kids go there, ask, "What curriculum do you use?" I had one teacher tell me, "I don't have to use a curriculum. I can just give them ditto's." So I saw the kids were sitting around, and they were each working on ditto's. There needs to be a trigger to know if they're not using the curriculum, well, what are they using? And we were told that it's up to the site administrator to monitor this. And so we feel that that's a lack of accountability on this part. We were told that they're, they're told that they need to teach to the standards, the content standards, but they're not required to use the curriculum. And it goes along with what, what we know.
Angie, can you please wrap up?
Yes, I can. We also want to know about the Fair Education Act, and because of all of the climate issues that we're having, that this curriculum needs to align with that. And just concerns overall in this whole approval process for the curriculum. And I don't think that the community was fully engaged in this, and it should be in the future, so.
Thank you, Angie. And I know that I was tracking the emails going back and forth between you and Dr. Taylor, as I suppose other board members were. And I think we have one more comment from Angel?
No.
Oh, you took her time, too.
I did.
Sorry I made you wrap up then.
No, that's okay.
You could have had a little more time.
Okay.
Thank you, Angie. So we have a motion. Do we have a second? All those in favor? Aye. Okay. We've adopted the agenda. 10.0, communications. 10.1, employee organizational reports. We'll begin with SCTA. Do we have anyone from SCTA here tonight? Teamsters? UPE? District Parent Advisory Committees. Item 10.2, Community Advisory Committee. District English Learner Advisory Committee. Local Control Accountability Plan, Parent Advisory Committee. I suspect people are on summer break.
Thank you very much, President Ryan. I want to start by welcoming back all of our board members and community members who are here today. I hope that everyone had a restful, albeit brief, summer break. I do want to also just take a moment and thank our board. About a year ago, when I was hired, the board and I agreed on a shared goal that many, if not all, of our board meetings had to focus on student achievement. And over the course of the last year, we have remained committed as a board and as superintendent to make sure that we were consistently bringing information to our community around student achievement. And you should expect that commitment to continue over the next year as well. I also want to welcome back our principals, who returned to work this week and have spent the last two days in full-day trainings associated to a range of things such as human resources, sexual harassment, special education, school safety, legal mandates, business services, et cetera. And I do want to congratulate many of our new principals who have just been appointed, including John McMeekin at West Campus, Tariq McFall at Albert Einstein, Nang Hur at Edward Kimball, Corey Jones at Rosa Parks, James Ader at Didion, Matt Schlager at Earl Warren, and Cynthia Bolton at New Tech. Please, if you see them, please congratulate them and welcome them to SAC City. Obviously, they play a very important role in the success of our students. Also very optimistic about the start of the school year on August 30th. You heard today, two achievements that we're very proud of as a board and as superintendent. The first is, and you will hear more about, the Expanded Learning Summer Program, which just ended last Friday, and we are in the process of studying all of the data associated to that program. But I will say, and I do want to thank our community, we have found that 77% of the students that we identified attended our Expanded Learning Summer Program, and that is a high number for a first-year program. That meant that over 3,000 students, starting in kindergarten, attended our Expanded Learning Summer Program, were fed very nutritious meals, and of course, most importantly, were exposed to rigorous first-tier instruction in the classroom. I also want to commend our staff for their effort in the SAT Day Administration effort. Obviously, 162 students who, by virtue of coming to school on April 10th, taking the SAT, and starting their first day of their senior year in a position where they're now eligible to apply to a college or university is something that we ought to be very proud of. But I do want to be very clear with our community. Mr. Harris, as part of his presentation around the SAT Day, presented a data set that showed that for our African-American youth, and for other youth candidly, even though many of those students came to school on April 10th, in the case of African-American students, 94% of our 11th-grade African-American students came to school on April 10th, and yet only 78% took the SAT. And that just is a reflection for me as superintendent, and for all of us as Sacramentoans, that culture eats strategy. Even where we made a commitment as a board to pay for every single student to take the SAT, the question, as Mr. Harris declared, is for us to unpack why it is that despite those kinds of opportunities, students were not given the opportunity, or students did not take the SAT on April 10th. And I take that as a sign that we will continue to be very vigilant, as our core value states, that we have to monitor certain cultural artifacts in SAC City Unified, and I hope that our community will join me in standing firm that we have to address those cultural norms. Obviously, there's other accomplishments, and I look forward to being with you here in space with you twice a month, and demonstrating the commitment of all of our staff to do right for students in partnership with this amazing Board of Trustees.
Thank you, Superintendent Aguilar. I have just a few comments under the President's Report, item 10.4. I want to invite the community to a special screening that's happening on August 24th in partnership with several community groups in Oak Park, including City of Refuge. The screening is called "The Forgotten Children of Sacramento," and it focuses on survivors of human trafficking. As you know, we have had an epidemic in the Sacramento region, and a board member, Pritchett and I, have launched a program, SHINE, in direct response to combating that reality. There are some phenomenal stories from survivors. There will be some outstanding community groups in presence, and there will also be a panel presentation from some of the community members who are leading the work to prevent the victimization of children in our communities. So that will be August 24th from 6:30 PM to 8:30 PM at the Guild. It's free, but you do have to register online. I wanted to just have two additional comments, one on the Expanded Learning Summer Program. I thank the superintendent for his initial report. I will tell you, many of you know that my daughter was identified as being off track and not meeting grade level going into third grade, and she had an opportunity to participate in ELSP this summer. It was very telling to me the first day when I walked her into their neighborhood elementary school, and I looked around the room, and the students who had all been enrolled in this program were students that looked like my daughter. They were brown-and-black students for the most part, and it was telling to me as we focus on this grade-level readiness, that we were, for the first time since I've been a board member, intentionally focusing on grade-level readiness for a population that is quite often left behind. And I share that because not one day did my daughter tell me that she didn't want to get up and go to school in the morning. A daughter who had struggled last year and who had been told at one point that she might be retained, looked forward to coming to class every day. She told me halfway into the program that her summer teacher had told her that she could be a mathematician if she wanted to be, and that she was smart. She was so proud of that. And at the end of the day, and we're still waiting the final results, my daughter saw significant gains in her reading and her comprehension. She saw slight gains in her math, but what she saw that was most remarkable to me was a belief in herself that she was a scholar. And she heard that I had a meeting with the superintendent yesterday. She asked me, "Am I going to get to see Superintendent Aguilar?" And I said, "Brooklyn, why do you want to see Superintendent Aguilar?" And she said to me, "Because I want to thank him." And I said, "Thank him for what?" And she said, "For putting me into summer school." Because she would really love that experience. So she said that totally unprompted, and for her, it has been an incredible learning opportunity, and I believe it is the same for the 3,000 students who had the ability to participate in the program this summer. I say that recognizing that we don't have funding for it next summer, and we are going to have to make tough choices to make sure that children like my daughter and the 3,000 children like her that are hanging their hopes and dreams on having additional learning opportunities, see those opportunities. Two last things. Superintendent Aguilar actually celebrated a year in the community recently. Today, in my social media feed, I was reminded that a year ago today, at Standing Room Only, hundreds of individuals gathered in Clara to greet our new superintendent and to share our hopes and dreams and expectations for his tenure with SAC City Unified. We were excited and energized around this vision of equity, access, and social justice. And we're still energized and excited. The work is hard. It's been daunting at times. But we know that this superintendent has unapologetically and courageously used data as a spotlight to not just talk about equity, access, and social justice for some, but to really live and breathe equity, access, and social justice for all. So when I'm hearing our advocates from our special education community that have been left behind for far too long, when I'm hearing our advocates from our black community who are feeling like their voices have fallen upon deaf ears, once again, I say to you, this superintendent has asked for achievement for both of these two subgroups to be put as an evaluation metrics in his assessment, in his superintendent evaluation, because he's not just talking about equity, access, and social justice. He is living that with a commitment to doing better for your students. So I want to say thank you to all the Expanded Learning Summer Program staff that put their love, blood, sweat, and tears into making this summer a success. And that includes our amazing head of HR, Consey McKernan, who is celebrating her birthday today. Yay! I am not going to lead you through an exercise of me singing "Happy Birthday," but we have a card and a little gift for you, Consey. And we don't say this to you enough, you are often on the front line of very difficult battles within the district, but you are loved and appreciated, and you are not only an incredible individual, but a former kindergarten teacher that does this hard work day in day out because you believe in the potential of our students. Happy birthday, and thank you. Item 10.5, Student Member Report. We don't have our student member with us tonight. Item 10.6, Information Sharing by Board Members. Vice President Wu, followed by Second Vice President Minnick.
Thank you, President Ryan. I wish I had a wonderful, relaxing summer holiday, but I haven't. I want to let everybody know that I, along with Member Pritchett, attended the California School Board Association Leadership Institute in San Francisco a couple of weekends ago, where we focused on girls and women in education primarily into primarily male-dominated areas such as computer science and coding. It was very enlightening and very encouraging. I think Member Pritchett will agree with me. Last weekend, part of the week, I was at the Council of Great City Schools Executive, Quarterly Executive Committee Meeting in Anchorage. But part of what I want to say about the Council of Great City Schools is, hopefully, if I'm here in 2022 October, they would like us to consider Sacramento City, Sacramento City Unified School Board to host a national convention. I have criteria here with me. I'm going to share this if you, if my colleagues would agree with me. I want to share it with the mayor's office and the tourist center to see if we have the wherewithal, the bandwidth here in Sacramento to bid for the National Council of Great City Schools Annual Convention.
Wonderful. Thank you so much, Board Member Wu.
Thank you. I also want to let people know that my sister's house is, one of the organizations I'm associated with is hosting a book reading night on August 24th at Belle Coolidge Elementary. It's free, from 6:30 to 8:30, featuring the author Marcia Azumi, who has written the book Two Spirits, One Heart, and it's about the experiences of a mother with a transgender son. So if anybody is interested, again, that's a free event, and I thank you for the opportunity to share this with you.
Thank you, Board Member Wu. Vice President Minnick.
Thank you. I have a couple of things. One is kind of a shout-out. Last week, I was in Atlanta presenting to the Big Picture Learning Conference, and I got to spend some quality time with staff from the Met. A lot of you may know that the Met is a Big Picture Learning school. They follow the, kind of the model that was created by Big Picture Learning. And so the Met High School, which is also where my, my kids have gone, their principal, Denise Lambert, and two of their teachers, Sean and Manny, I don't know their last names because the kids all call them by their first name, but they gave up a week of their summer vacation to be out there and be involved in this training and partnership with other schools, and they're using this opportunity to really look at new innovative ideas for their school. And I just wanted to give them a shout-out because I really appreciate that they gave up their own time. They were not getting paid to be out there. They spent a week in, in Atlanta to, to see how they can do more for their students, and I really appreciate their contribution last week. The other thing I want to share, which is not as positive, last week, we lost Angie Valdez, who is a staff person at Mark Twain Elementary School. Valdez, who is a staff person at Mark Twain Elementary School. She was a yard duty and a crossing guard. When I moved into the Talek Village neighborhood 18 years ago, we would see her out there every day, and they don't know this, but like my kids and my wife and I always referred to her as Mrs. Talek Village, because we'd always see her out there. She, in the fall, Superintendent Aguilar and I went out to celebrate her. She had been in the district. She'd been working at, at Mark Twain for over 20 years, and she's just been a mainstay at that school and in our neighborhood. So she passed away last week, and the superintendent and I were notified on Friday by one of her colleagues at the school. And I just want to let folks know that on Saturday, there will be a celebration of Mrs. Angie at Tahoe Park. I would hold this up, but you won't be able to see it, but at Tahoe Park at 9:30 in the morning. It looks like it's in the East Side gazebo of Tahoe Park, this Saturday, August 4th, at 9:30, where folks will be sharing their experiences with Mrs. Angie. So I wanted to share that with everybody. Thanks. Oh, and also, if we, if my colleagues will allow me, I would like to adjourn tonight's meeting in Miss Angie's honor.
That would be wonderful. Thank you, Vice President Minnick. Looks like we have a final comment from Board Member Hanson.
Thank you. Just a quick thanks to Dr. Senator Pan for partnering with Leotada Floyd and myself. We did a great day at the school on Monday. They've got well over 100 students are there almost every day during the summer, so they've got a really great summer program going there. And we did a day of free food and free dental and vision screening. It was really successful. We had the Bookmobile from the library there giving out free books. It turned out to be a really wonderful event, and I just wanted to thank Dr. Pan, and he's been, and he's helping lead a program, a million meal program for the state of California, trying to expand free breakfast and lunch for our students all across the state. So he's been a real good champion in that and someone who's helping us here at the district, too, at one of our most impacted schools. So, thanks.
Thank you, Board Member Hanson. I think that Board Member Wu has a final comment.
And Board Member Hanson reminded me of this. Saturday, for those children who need a backpack or don't have a backpack, our Assembly member, Jim Cooper, will be at Burbank High School between 10:00 and 1:00, giving out free backpacks to children. So the unshameless plug for Assembly member Cooper, but for those children who are without, here's an opportunity to be with. Thank you.
Thank you. Item 10.7, Board Committee Reports. We have no Board Committee Reports this evening. Item 11.0, Business and Financial Information. Receive 11.1, Financial Reports, Enrollment and Attendance Report for Month Nine, ending May 18th, as well as Month Ten, ending June 14th. Item 12.0, Future Board Meeting Location and Dates. We will have our next board meeting on August 16th at 4:30 p.m. for a closed session, 6:00 p.m. for open session. And with that, I am going to entertain a motion to adjourn in the honor of Angie Valdez's service to the district.
Move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
With that, we're adjourned.
I thought you wanted to adjourn into closed session for a final item.
No, we're going to move that final item to the August 16th board meeting.
Sorry, I was misinformed.
That's fine. We are adjourned.